Good evening. We'd like to call this meeting the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. If we'd all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
And I'd like to introduce the members of the Commission that are here this evening. To my far right is Gina Morgenstein, an alternate on the Commission. Next to Gina is Jeffrey Kohan, a Commission member. To my immediate right is James Fitzsimmons, also a Commission member. And to my left is J. P. Voin, who is the Vice Chairman of the Commission. At the table to my right is Casey Hannah, our Town Planner, and I'm Jim Seikter, Chairperson of the Commission. Our first order of business would be to approve the minutes of our August 14, 2017, meeting. And does any Commission members have any additions, corrections to the minutes? Casey, I have a couple. On page seven, the last full paragraph, it starts off, "Mr. Settle landscaping request from the Planning and Zoning Commission seems unusual." I think it should be Mr., it should say DeCarlo. And then on page 12, on the second full paragraph, after the heading of Public Comment, it said, Chair Seikter said, "Mr. Balterminas indicated that the parcel of the building is..." It should be indicated that if the parcel of the building is being placed on, so if you could put an "if" in there. And with that, I don't have any comments. Does any other Commission members have any comments? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to accept the minutes as revised.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Planning and Zoning Commission minutes from the August 14, 2017, meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? J. P. and Mr. Fitzsimmons abstained, as they weren't at the meeting. All right, it brings us to our agenda. Just a note for the public, under Old Business, item number one is a site plan. It's a multifamily conversion in the C.L.B. zone. It's DeCarlo at 143 South Main Street. The applicant has requested that no action be taken on this application this evening, so that will not be heard. So if anyone's here for that application, that's not going to be heard this evening. It should be heard at our October meeting. That brings us to our item number two, which is a site plan accessory apartment for Asklar at 4 Gina Lane. If the applicant would please come forward to begin for the presentation. And Mr. Fitzsimmons, if you would please note all correspondence for the record. And before we get started, Mrs. Morgenstein, if you would please sit in until Mr. Madarazzo, if he does come this evening. And again, Mr. Fitzsimmons, please note all correspondence for the record.
Sure. A memo was received from the Wallingford Fire Marshal dated July 18, 2017. A memo was received from the Department of Health in Wallingford dated July 12, 2017. A memo was received from the Senior Engineer of the Wallingford Water and Sewer dated August 1, 2017. A letter was sent from this office to Richard Nalane-Asklar on July 25, 2017. Another letter was sent to the same recipients, August 29, 2017. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. If the applicants would please introduce themselves and begin their presentation.
I'm Richard Asklar.
Elaine Asklar.
We have an apartment in our house that we didn't permit it. We didn't understand. We had to have a permit for it. It was basically a room for my mother to live with in our home, but as she aged, needed more care, we added a bathroom. And then as she needed more care after that, we added a kitchen for the caretakers to take care of her, basically family. And it came to the town's attention. There were many reassessments. Everything was evaluated. It was taxed. Everything was on the list. We retained taxes and everything. So I didn't feel the need to do anything about it. I know I had to do anything about it.
No, we had to do anything about it, because it was a place for her to live out the rest of her life with dignity. And then when she died, my mother moved in.
If you could just pull the microphone a little bit closer.
When she passed away, then my mother moved in. So we're done with...
But it basically is an in-law apartment. And Amy says, you know, you might just, you know, apply for a permit to use it as an in-law apartment to sell the feature for the house. Eventually, we're going to sell the house, and maybe, you know, it'll help us sell it.
So the bottom line, it's an in-law apartment.
Correct.
And at this point in time, it's not...
I believe it meets all the criteria to be an in-law apartment. I wasn't sure about the exit into the garage of the main house, but it was brought to my attention that's cobalt aesthetic.
Because it doesn't exit outside the house. It exits into our garage.
We're basically using the kitchen as a summer kitchen for our garage parties and pool. We have a pool in the backyard. Picnics, we have in the garage when it rains. And we got used to using the kitchen, you know? But it is, it can qualify, I believe, for an in-law apartment, so that's why we're here, to apply for that.
How long has it been an in-law apartment?
My mother...
1996.
No, it hasn't been an apartment that long. My mother died in '06, 2006. And it was only the last few years. Last year, she was institutionalized, but maybe five years of that, she lived in it. And her mom lived in it for a couple of years to her demise.
After that.
Okay. Commission members with questions for the applicant? Casey, any comments? And comments as far as just the entrance into the garage?
Yeah, that's not an issue, because they still have the apartment. That's part of what makes it an apartment, is that it still has an access to without going through the primary unit. Yeah.
Okay. This is not a public hearing, but if there's any members from the public who would like to comment on the application, certainly feel free, come forward and name an address. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Commission for any final comments. If there's none, I'll entertain a motion on the application.
I make a motion. All right. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve a site plan for Asklar for a 489 square-foot accessory apartment at 4 Gina Lane, as shown on Untitled Plans, faxed received on July 7, 2017. Subject to final inspection by...
The zoning enforcement officer has already been out there, so you don't have to do that.
So we're squared away on that? Okay. We have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kohan, voting beginning with Mrs. Morgenstein.
Yes.
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 And yes, application's been approved. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Brings us up to our next item. It's a site plan, traffic circulation modification, Laflamme at 968 Yale Avenue. Again, Mr. Fitzsimmons, if you'd note all correspondence for the record, and if the applicant would please come forward to begin preparing for the presentation.
Correspondence was sent from the Planning and Zoning Office on July 27, 2017, to Richard LaFond regarding the application. Correspondence was also sent to Richard LaFond on August 31, 2017, from the Office of the Town Planner. Correspondence was received from the Water and Sewer Senior Engineer, dated 8/29/17. Correspondence was received on August 29, 2017, from Winterborne Land Services regarding the application. An inter-office memorandum was received from the Wallingford Fire Marshal dated August 15, 2017. A memo was received from the Wallingford Fire Marshal's Office to August 24 of this year. And finally, a letter was, a revised letter was received from Winterborne Land Services, addressed to the Planning and Zoning Office on August 9, 2017. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Fitzsimmons. If the applicant and/or his representative, please introduce themselves and begin their presentation.
Yes. For the record, my name is Rosalynn Page, professional land surveyor from Winterborne Land Services, with an office at 604 Center Street in Wallingford.
Richard LaFond, 38 Fieldstone Court in North Haven.
So this evening, the application in front of you is for a property located at 968 Yale Avenue. It's a triangular piece of property and has been operating as a car wash since it was approved by this Commission in 1989. Mr. LaFond purchased the property in 1994 and has been operating it as a car wash since that point in time. As you can see from the plans, it's a triangular-shaped piece of property. There's a building with six self-service bays in it, and an office space over the top. There's a section of the building that has a office space on the second floor. The original, the construction and layout of the building and the asphalt is pretty much as was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission in 1989. The difference, and the reason for us being here today, is that is due to the traffic circulation pattern. Originally, as part of the 1989 approval, the traffic was going to come in, and the vehicles were going to enter the car wash bays from the front, and exit at the rear, and then go back out from there. So the circulation would have been a counterclockwise.
Counter.
Since 1994, when Mr. LaFond purchased the property, he has maintained the traffic circulation in the opposite direction. So it has been functioning like that for 23 years. It came to the town's attention that the circulation system was going in the opposite direction, which was not part of the approval, so he was asked to come back in and get a site plan modification, if he wished to keep the traffic going in the way that he has been doing it for the last 23 years. So that is why we're here tonight. So as part of the site plan approval, we have worked with the Town Planner to try and improve the conditions here. And as per her letters, we have addressed pretty much all of the comments, except for a few which I will go over with you this evening. What we have done in order to try and improve the potential traffic flow is agreed to construct an island in the driveway throat of the property to improve the ingress and egress situation, and to put more directional arrows in the parking lot to try and facilitate or help facilitate traffic movement. As you can see, all the vacuums are actually located along the front of the building. So right now, it makes sense for vehicles to come in through the back, through the car wash, and then, if they wish to use the vacuums, to use those at the front and then move out from there. The remaining items from the Town Planner's letter that we need to discuss this evening are her first comment about the decision about putting a landscaped, an additional landscaped island of the front yard setback area, the front landscaped area, to further guide traffic in that entrance area. She had requested that we put a landscape, extend the landscaping in there. What we would prefer to do is to put additional planters in that area as a guide to traffic. However, if the Commission is so inclined to go with the Town Planner's decision, we will work with you on that.
Excuse me, just for the benefit of the Commission and other people in the audience, if you could please just show on your plans exactly the area that, on that southeast portion of the property that's being requested to extend the landscaping?
Okay, so for orientation, Yale Avenue is here. The building is here. Right now, the entrance is in here, and that's where we propose to keep it. We are proposing to put an island in here to clean up the traffic movement area in here. But the area in question that we are having discussions with the Town Planner on is right in here.
Right by the stop, excuse me, right by the stop bar, is that correct?
Yes. Yeah, so the Town Planner suggested that in order to facilitate vehicles leaving the car wash, coming to the stop bar, and then waiting for traffic to come through before making their exit, that she suggested we show a bump out. We increase this landscaping area here to here to force the traffic to stay in a single line here up to the stop bar.
Good. Thank you.
In addition to that, the outstanding comments from her letter are that curbing should be installed around the new landscaped island at the center in here, and we have no problem with that. And we would provide low-growing shrubs in addition to flowers and specify the types. Any planters that are still going to be remaining on the site, we will provide details for. Her item number four, we will modify the dimension of the shade trees to the six inches required for each 50 feet. That was an error on my part, putting one and a half inches in instead of six, so I apologize for that. And the existing lighting fixtures are full cutoff lighting. So at this point, the only remaining issue, we believe, is this landscaped island. The applicant originally would have preferred to put planters in there, but if the Commission so chooses for us to follow the Town Planner's direction, we will submit revised plans to that effect.
Good. Thank you. I take it that's the extent of your presentation, is that correct?
It is.
Good. Thank you. Casey, would you like to just comment on your recommendation as far as extending that island to the south?
Sure. One of the reasons I have some concerns about the sort of crossing of traffic or the intersection of traffic at that entrance and exit. I think we've seen this at a drive-thru at the Dunkin' Donuts on South Colony. There's kind of a similar design, and that was of some concern. And we added some additional, we had some additional requirements then to try to make it as safe as possible. Here, what my thought was, or part of what my thought, I think this page addressed it, but also when a vehicle is entering, I think if we elongate the time that they're going down the drive before they're reaching that intersecting section, I think that helps too, because it gives them that much more time to realize that they're about to cross traffic. So I feel that, you know, I mean, I just think the planters aren't going to make it clear enough, and they're not permanent enough. Those are, that's what my concerns about those two things are.
Thank you. Yeah, I guess from my perspective, looking at it, if it's between extending the island or the planters, I mean, the planters, I think as our Town Planner said, are not permanent. Certainly, you'd have an issue when it comes to, you know, the winter weather, and you have snow, ice, and that needs to be plowed. I think it would be just a challenge with the planters and once they're moved to put them back into the proper position. So, but other Commission members with comments on the application? Mrs. Morgenstein?
I've never driven in there. I've been by for years. But, so the entering from the rear is a necessity of the functionality, because it seems to me if you entered from the front, you wouldn't have that crossing traffic. But function-wise, you have to enter from the rear?
Could I answer that one?
Yeah.
If you enter from the front of the building, all right, the previous owner was always complaining about it, because that's the way the plants were originally designed. And what would take place is that the first two or three bays would have cars waiting.
And it would back up.
And then back up, and then nobody would drive to bay four, five, or six, you know, entering from the front.
Uh-huh.
By changing that, I did it, I changed it, I made the planters, okay? And by designing that on an angle, which the planter is a better situation, to be honest with you, because it's so pronounced, all right? They're two-foot-high barrels, okay, where a customer might not see a curb, but definitely is going to see a planter. All right, so when we did that, we made all the traffic enter from the rear of the building. That opened up the entire lot to traffic flow, okay? And it made it a whole bunch easier.
And then the thing that is the counterpoint to it is that you've got these intersecting, they have to come in, take a right, and the other people have to get out to the right. You've now got that.
Well, they'll either turn to the right or to the left. However, for the most part, if they're, if they're enter the building from the rear, they have more of a value, more of a, be able to see what's out in front of them, okay, as far as cars at the vacuum cleaners, or cars coming down the hill, or, you know what I mean? And it's, and it's by tapering with the planters, you're almost, you know what I mean? We have a stop sign and an enter sign and all that. We have all that. But it makes it easier and more, excuse me, it opens up the whole situation. I mean, there, as soon as you come out of the building and you're starting to head for the driveway, you can see everything.
Well, what you gain at that end is what you lose at the entrance, where people have to cross over as they're leaving. So when you come out the front, you take a right, now you're forced to cross traffic to take the left, which is what we're making sure is safely accessible.
It's nice to have that kind of traffic. We'll do extra business.
Yeah, yeah, for you. Okay. I just, you know, it just seems...
No, no, I'm just, I'm not trying, I'm not trying to give you a hard time, but it just, it worked out, it worked out real well. And it worked out real well for 23, 24 years, and never had an accident or an issue or a problem, or, I mean, never, whatever.
Thank you.
Other Commission members? Mr. Kohan?
Yeah, just a quick question. I live right up the street. I've gone by this for 23 years. Frankly, I've never seen a traffic problem with the way you had it set up.
It's not Rule 5. There is not, you know, not that kind of traffic.
And I'm fine with this plan. I was just wondering, are you losing a vacuum stand?
No.
With this plan?
No.
Because, you know, the way it is, you have a couple of them right against Yale Avenue. I'm just not seeing what I thought I would see.
That is a question. It's close. It's close. It's not, you know what I mean? It's...
Okay. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Other Commission members? Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Just a couple of comments. I am, I'm familiar with this, and I was thinking about it compared to other car washes we have. And I know Casey and I have talked at times about the car wash on Hartford Turnpike and the significant number of vehicles on-site and the traffic. This site, with the addition of the elevated curb cut, I think is an improvement. And if I understand, is that what you're proposing, is to elevate the curb cut? Because right now, Gina, it's just, it's wide open. So to me, that kind of tames the traffic in the getting, getting people in and out. My concern on the additional landscaping is the inevitable person who parks at the vacuum stand. So now I'm trying to get out, and I got someone at that last vacuum stand. I'm concerned that the addition of the landscaping, permanent landscaping versus the planters, causes a flow of traffic, because having been there, you know, in the winter, sometimes, as we know, car washes, people are going to spend their time in their car after they wash it to vacuum. So now you have the traffic, their cars parked there. It could lead to...
Thank you.
It's either that or hit the barrels then.
You're going to, you're going to have a, you're going to have that situation, whether the barrels are there or whether you expand the, you know, the landscaping. So I think that situation will occur...
Right.
No matter what's there.
Yeah. But I do, I said, I do think, you know, the landscaped island at the entrance is probably the biggest improvement, has proposed.
Other Commission members? Any final comments from the applicant?
Thank you.
You're welcome. They don't thank me yet. They don't thank the Commission yet. I think the one item out here is, you know, it's either extending the, extending the island to the southeast or, you know, keeping the rodeo approach with the barrels. So I guess I'd ask the Commission members, just, I mean, let's be honest. How do people, how do people feel about that?
I like rodeos.
I do, too. Casey, any final comments? I'm sorry.
Just in regard to the landscaping, I was going to say, if, to maybe, maybe address Mr. Fitzsimmons's concern, we could shorten it up a little bit and pull it closer to... My primary concern is really at the entrance point, not down by the vacuum, the last vacuum stall. So we could pull it back a few feet if that would help get people in and out. Just a thought. And then the only other things I wanted to just mention separately are, you probably saw my comments regarding the use or the location of the handicap accessible spaces and the explanation for that. So I just want to make sure that's clear to everyone. It made sense to me, and that you have your dumpster located in the back corner with your screening.
Thank you. So again, the suggestion was from our, at least our Town Planner, to perhaps bring the, bring that landscaped island, instead of bringing it down by, I guess, five barrels, only have it at three barrels, is that correct? Where the three barrels are shown on the plans, is that what you were thinking, Casey? Again, I just entertain comments from Commission members, how they may or may not feel about that.
Fine.
Good. Southeast. Southeast. That being said, again, this is not a public hearing, but if there's any members from the Commission who would like to, excuse me, any members from the public that would like to comment on the application, please come forward and name an address. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Commission for a, if there's no further comments for our motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve a site plan for LaFond to modify the site circulation, parking, and associated elements for the existing car wash at 968 Yale Ave., as shown on plans entitled Improvement Location Survey: Existing Conditions Map and Proposed Improvement, Land Richard A. and Carol A. LaFond, 968 Yale Ave., Wallingford, Connecticut, dated June 21, 2017, revised to August 8, 2017, subject to, here we go, to bring the landscaped southwest...
Southeast.
Southeast. The landscaped aisle, southeast.
And bring it down to just the three barrels.
Bringing it down to three barrels.
Can you cover the area of three barrels?
That's pretty technical.
Shown on the plan?
What's that?
To cover the area shown by three of the barrels on the plan, or...
It's a new unit measure. As noted by the Town Planner.
Could you also, does, the revision date on the map currently is 8/15/17, not 8/8?
Okay, revised August 15, 2017.
We have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mrs. Morgenstein.
Yes.
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 And yes, application's been approved. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. I like rodeos.
I do, too.
Good man.
Stoney Burke, right?
Yeah.
All right, it brings us to our next item, Agenda Item Number Four. It's a site plan dental office slash retail space, Signore at 1163 South Broad Street. Again, if the applicant's representative, please come forward to begin preparing for the presentation. And Mr. Fitzsimmons, if you'd note all correspondence for the record.
Sure. The Office of the Town Planner sent a letter dated August 3, 2017, to Stephen Signore. The letter was received, the Planning and Zoning Office, dated August 31, 2017, from the Office of Giuliano Associates. Another letter was received from the Office of Giuliano Associates on July 7, 2017. An interdepartmental referral memo was received from the Environmental Planner on September 1, 2017. An additional letter was, excuse me, an additional memo was received from Eloise Hazelwood, the Director of Health in Wallingford, dated April 2017. A copy of a memorandum was received from Rob Balterminas from the Department of Engineering, dated September 11, 2017. A copy of a memorandum was received from Rob Balchamis from the Department of Engineering, dated September 11th, 2017. And we have another copy of a letter dated August 3rd, 2017, from this office to Stephen Signore, DBA Pine Glen Builders.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. If the applicant's representative, please introduce himself and begin his presentation.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Christopher Giuliano. I'm a licensed land surveyor and professional engineer with the firm of Giuliano Associates. I maintain office at 405 Main Street in the Yalesville section of town. I'm going to go to the board, run through the site plan, and then address the various comments that we got from town staff. So what is being proposed is a dental office and a general office space in the old Cafe Ra building, as most of the commission members and people who've been in town for a while have known, at 1163 South Main Street. So kind of on the backside of the Staples Plaza, as you're heading towards Meriden, this is kind of up on the hill on the left. Basically, existing 5,000 square foot footprint building, associated parking. We have the South Broad Street right here, which is Connecticut Route 150. We have our entrance, we have a little bit of parking along the right side, but the majority of the parking lot is right here in the front, and then off to the south. What is being proposed is to, basically, a change of use from the former restaurant bakery deli use to the first floor will be, hold the dentist office for orthodontics. And then the second floor, a portion of that will be for general office rental with about a 1,500 square foot of storage. And right now, the plan is to rent the upstairs general office to a yoga studio. So it'll be basically an evening operation, and it really won't conflict with the orthodontics operation, which is about 7:00 to 4:00, Monday through Friday. So in order to come into compliance, we had to make a number of changes to the site, mainly with respect to parking, because the dentist medical use that the orthodontics would fall under has a higher parking ratio than general office, so we had to bring the site into compliance. In order to do that, we basically created a one-way traffic flow around the northwest and south sides of the building, and added basically some parallel parking, which we designated for staff only. Basically, keeping the major portion of the parking open for customers and basically tenants for the upstairs yoga studio. Casey Costello had a number of comments, technical comments with respect to the site plan layout. We've addressed all of those, and I spoke to her earlier today. The only, I would say, remaining outside comment is Casey would like us to remove these two parking spaces along the north side of the driveway, so that the 25 feet of landscaping is also on the north side of the driveway. And speaking with her this afternoon, if we do lose those two parking spaces, it drops us below our parking lot count. However, we, I believe that we have enough space along the south side of the building where I can put two more parallel parking spaces and bring us back up. So I agreed to do that, so we'll just take care of it and make it on the final change of the plans. With respect to grading, drainage, and site plan, stormwater control, not much is happening to site. We are closing off the corners of the parking lot, so that we can meet some landscaping requirements. We're also going to be removing the gravel along this southeast corner of the parking lot. And in doing so, we're going to add two catch basins to catch the drainage that normally flows here, and we'll pipe it out into the catch basin in South Broad Street. We do have a high point roughly through the middle of the building, and the back half of the property drains to the property to the west. In order to deal with the runoff from our parking lot, we added a little small detention area. In the first rendition of the plans, we were trying to go underground and infiltrate, but because we're in the aqua protection district, the water and sewer department didn't want us to do that. So we went back to an earlier plan, and we have a small detention area that basically just overflows and drains onto our budding property owner and to the water course to the west. Now, there has been some discussion that we're draining onto the budding property owner. The thing you have to remember is runoff from the site goes there naturally. We have the right to continue to do it as long as we don't exasperate the issue. And that's really the reason for this small stormwater management, so we can control our stormwater and let it flow out at a slower metered rate. And just to put this in perspective, the amount of stormwater in a 100-year storm that flows onto Mr. Cohen's property, who's our westerly butter, is 1.0, I'm sorry, 0.64 CFS. It's a very small number for the 100-year design storm. So since we're controlling it, it is a very small flow. There will be no negative impact on him. In addition to that, we also met with Mr. Cohen regarding this issue, showed him the plans, discussed it with him, and we actually received a letter, which I gave a copy to Casey, from Mr. Cohen. We got that tonight. I gave it to Casey, and I'll let Casey kind of read it or paraphrase it for the commission. Basically, in essence, he really doesn't have a problem with what we're doing. He understands that the water does flow there naturally, and we are controlling it, and it won't negatively impact him in the least. With respect to other town staff comments, I'm going to kind of go in chronological order. We have addressed Casey's comments. There were comments from the Department of Health. They were concerned with the change of use from the old restaurant to the dentist and the office retail. What I did to basically satisfy the health department is I went and I looked at water use data for both operations. I went back in the record, got the water use records from the town, showing how much water on a daily use Cafe Ra used. I compared that with what the current orthodontics across the street, they're up over by the Kohl's Plaza, right out front, what they use on a current daily basis for water usage. I also factored in what the proposed office upstairs would use. We're about half of what Cafe Ra use, so as far as the septic system, there shouldn't be an issue. I've provided that information to Steve Civitelli, the town sanitarium. He's agreed with me, so I believe we are satisfied from the standpoint of water use and sanitation. We also got comments from water and sewer. Most of them dealt with, again, water use, interior plumbing, fixture counts. All of that will be handled more on the building side, once we have the final interior layout done. But as far as anything to the site plan, the site plan does address all their issues with the aqua protection district, water use, sanitation, so we're all set there. I would imagine that the remaining comments that deal with the plumbing plans will all be just made conditions of approval as usual. The environmental planner had some comments. We got those last week. I addressed the letter to Casey to address her comments. I believe those are all taken care of to Casey's satisfaction. I don't believe she has any more concerns with respect to the environmental planner's concerns. And last but not least, this evening, we received a copy of comments from the town engineer. His comments basically focus again around this detention basin. He would like us to create an outlet that takes the water from the detention basin and brings it into the drainage in Route 150, South Broad Street. I see a couple of issues with that. First of all, the drainage in South Broad Street is a state drainage system. Their mandate is to not put additional water into their system. Secondly, since this part of the site flows westerly, we'd be basically bringing it to the east side of the site, which is technically a diversion, again, something we shouldn't be doing. As a condition of approval, I would like the ability to at least meet or contact the DOT, because as this commission knows, they won't even address anything until after I have local approvals. If they allow the drainage, the additional drainage to go into their system, we'll do that, and that way we'll satisfy the town engineer. If they don't, we'll leave the system as is, because A, I'm controlling the stormwater as I'm supposed to in conformance for the 2004 Stormwater Management Guide, and the budding property owner is aware of it and sees no problem with it. So if we can do that as a condition of approval and work it out with staff, I'd appreciate it. Other than that, if the commission has any questions, I'll address them at this time.
Commission members with any questions? Mr. Cohen.
Just a couple of quick questions. You mentioned it's going to be, top floor is going to be rented out to a yoga studio. Are there any, are there going to be any conflict in the hours of operation?
No, no. Generally, as I said, the orthodontics office basically runs 7:00 to 4:00, and the yoga studio is technically going to be operating at night, but I can't guarantee that there won't be overlap of hours, and we have enough parking as if they did overlap. So I think we're covered with respect to the parking issue.
Yep. And the last question is, you know, you mentioned the aqua for protection district, and, you know, Casey's comments, certain activities involving hazardous materials are prohibited from the site. And you mentioned that in your presentation. Do you know if they actually use hazardous materials in, at dental operation?
That I don't know, but any, any kind of materials that they do use that would be considered hazardous would be stored inside, stored properly, so I believe it would meet any kind of requirements that would be within the APD regulations. We're not storing anything outside where it could, you know, spill or anything like that. Everything would be contained inside. So we can definitely find out and get that answer to Casey, but I don't think it has an impact with respect to the site plan in general.
Yeah, if you could, Chris, I'd appreciate it. Thanks.
Other commission members?
Just one question. I understand that your parking is total 39 spots. The only thing is, can you add on a final plan some area for snow removal? If you're concerned about runoff, if you just make sure that it's designated somewhere on the map.
Okay. We actually, yeah, we have 47 spots in total. But yeah, we'll definitely, we can definitely put a snow storage area somewhere on the plan. We have enough area to do it, but we'll definitely do it on the final plan for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. And I would ask Mr. Benoit, if he would please read the letter from Mr. Cohen concerning the runoff issues.
Yes, dated September 7th, 2017, to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Dear Commission Members, I am the owner of 1173 South Broad Street, which is the budding property to the west of the above reference parcel. It is my understanding that the property is currently the subject of an application before your board, and certain concerns have been raised regarding the project's handling of stormwater runoff, particularly the fact that the stormwater will flow onto a portion of my property. It is my understanding that the property already drains onto my property, and that the engineer has taken the necessary steps to mitigate any negative impacts from the project. As such, I would like the commission to know that I have no issues with the project, or they're continuing to drain stormwater onto my property. Sincerely, Robert Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Benoit. And Casey, there, and Mr., the applicant's representative had mentioned the comments from the environmental planner, excuse me, our environmental, yeah, environmental planner. Can you just expound on those? Again, when I was reading it, I thought there was issues, and apparently those have been addressed. Is that correct?
I don't have a direct response from the environmental planner. However, those comments are generally addressed, or the, those were also the same comments that were raised in the town engineer's comments regarding how the basin is functioning and general runoff onto adjacent property, and I think that's more in that, under that.
So the town engineer, the comments that the town engineer made.
Should cover those.
Would cover that. Okay. All right, thank you. Any, any further comments, Mr. Giuliano?
No, all set.
Again, this is, it's not a public hearing, but if there's any members from the public who'd like to comment on the application, please come forward, state your name and address in your comments, please.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Jim Wolfe. I'm a member of the Economic Development Commission, and our commission has voted to support this project. It appears that they're really working to bring this building back to life and make it work for everybody. And the EDC does support it. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Other members? Seeing none, I guess I'll bring it back to you, Mr. Giuliano, if you'd like to make any final comments. Again, you're not compelled to.
All set.
If you've pleaded. Good. Casey, any final comments that you would like to make?
No, I'm very pleased that we've been able to come up with a conforming site design for these modifications. And just to review the conditions of approval discussed, you have comments from my letter dated August 3rd, 2017. Comments from the fire marshal dated July 18th, 2017. Comments from the town engineer dated September 11th, 2017. Comments from water and sewer dated August 4th, 2017, and comments from the health department dated April 3rd, 2017. And then in addition to that, I just want to make sure, I think, I think I gleaned the conditions, but one, I have that this, the language I would suggest is that the stormwater system to be modified to the satisfaction of the Connecticut DOT and the town engineer. Two, removal of two spaces in the front landscaping area, and an addition of two spaces to the south side of the building.
Hey, if you could slow down just a little bit for the benefit of Mr. Benoit, please.
Sure.
Rewind.
You have the attachments, right? Did we get that?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to address every single attachment.
Okay, okay. So then we have, one is the stormwater system to be modified to the satisfaction of the Connecticut DOT and the town engineer. Removal, two, removal of two, the two spaces in the required front landscaped area. An addition of two spaces to the south side of the building. And then three, provide, provide information regarding use of any potentially regulated hazardous materials.
Do we have the snow shelf in there also?
Oh, and the snow shelf.
Snow removal depicted. Snow shelf depicted in.
I just wanted to make sure we got everything.
Good.
Wait, as I go through, feel free to add.
Before I ask for a motion on the application, are there any final comments any commission members would make? That being said, I'll entertain a motion on the application.
All right, here goes. So we have, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for approval, a site plan for Signore to construct. Oh, that's not, where am I? Oh, that was it, yeah. Construct dormer additions, change the use to dental office storage, and make associated site updates improvements at 1163 South Broad Street, as shown on plans entitled Land of Manzor Anwar Zadi, 1163 South Broad Street, Wallingford, Connecticut, dated May 24th, 2017, updated August 31st, 2017. And floor plans, Manzor Zadi Building renovations, 1163 South Broad Street, Wallingford, Connecticut, dated October 2016. Subject to, let's go down the list. We have the environmental planner comments dated September 6th, 2017. We have the memo from the Director of Health for the Wallingford Health Department dated April 3rd, 2017. We have a memo comments from the Department of Public Utilities, Water and Sewer Division, dated August 4th, 2017. We have the memo comments from the fire marshal dated July 14th, 2017. We have the comments from the town planner dated August 3rd, 2017. We have the DOT approval of stormwater runoff by, I'm sorry, approval of stormwater runoff by DOT and town engineer. Snow shelf be depicted in plans. Two parking changes be addressed, removing two spaces in front and relocate to south side. An S and E bond to be determined by the town planner. An S and E bond to be determined by the Town Planner. And I think that was it. Am I missing any?
Did you get the information about the hazardous, potentially hazardous materials?
And, and the information providing use of any hazardous material. Thank you.
We have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mrs. Morganstein, please.
Yes.
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 And yes, the application's been approved. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Good night to you. Our next item is number five. It's a new business, a site plan, use of lots for vehicle storage. Gargano Limited Partnerships at 9 and 11 First Street. Again, if the applicant's representative would please come forward to begin with the presentation. And Mr. Fitzsimmons, if you would please note all correspondence for the record.
A letter was sent from the Office of the Town Planner dated August 31st of this year, dated to John Gargano Limited Partnership. A memorandum was received by the Town Planner from the Environmental Planner dated August 30th, 2017. Comments were received from the Water and Sewer, Water and Sewer Seating Engineer from the Town of Wallingford dated September 6th, 2017. Comments were received from the Fire Marshal's Office dated August 15th, 2017. Comments were received from the Environmental Planner dated August 31st, 2017. A letter was received from Harry E. Colson dated September 8th, 2017. And another letter was received on September 8th, 2017 from the same firm.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. If the applicant or his representative, please introduce themselves and begin their presentation.
Hi, good evening. My name is Bridget Gallagher and I'm the attorney for the applicant, John Gargano Limited Partnership. And with me is Michael Lambert. He's my client's professional engineer who designed the site plan. And my client regrets not being able to be here. He had longstanding travel plans and being a wise man, you know, knew not to tell his wife that they needed to reschedule. If I may just, I'm gonna give you a little orientation before we begin.
Okay. Sorry.
Okay, so this site plan application is in connection with two lots that are off of First Street, which maybe you never heard of. That's because it's a paper street that was created in the, in the 1920s for a subdivision and was never actually built. It's actually off of North Street. And my client, through his operating company, operates Wallingford Auto Park, which runs, of course, on North Colony Road. The address is 485 North Colony Road. So these lots are zoned residential. And last year in May of 2016, we came to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a use variance, which was granted subject to various conditions. And then subsequent to that, my client had to actually go to the Superior Court on a quiet title action to, to have his prescriptive rights over First Street converted into what was basically express rights that we could record on the land records so that he would have the right, not only to access, but also the right to make improvements on First Street and to build infrastructure because their stormwater system will go under what is First Street. So that has been, that has been accomplished. And in March of 2017, we did obtain a judgment. And that's recorded on the land records. And I did provide your planner with a copy of that for the, for the record. So, so basically what my client wishes to do in this site is basically to have a location for the storage of more vehicles and for employee parking. And it is not going to be a retail area that is open to members of the public. This entrance into, from North Street into the site is going to be for employees only. And, and if you've ever been out to the site, you know, there's a little bit of a grade change. So it really isn't ideal for retail. But he's basically trying to make some space because on his dealership, you know, he has a lot of movement in and out because there is a service department in the back. And so there's a lot of movement in and out with those vehicles and employee vehicles. And he wants to basically try to clear that area down below. So up here, we have shown a total of 84 spaces. A number of them are stacked spaces, 69 of them are stacked, stacked spaces. And 20, 25 of them are not. Those are compliant as, as the planner has, has termed it. And the, any parking that would be for employees would be in those compliant spaces. In designing the plan, of course, because he has some residential butters, my client has worked with a number of the neighbors, the residential neighbors, to develop a plan for screening that, that seemed to be acceptable to everyone that, that he's spoken to about this. And so that will include, in addition to a fence that he's putting up, a number of arborvitaries that are gonna also screen the property from the residential properties. And we did have a meeting with Casey last week with my client president, discussed in detail, you know, in terms of, you know, what type of surface would be on the, you know, within that fenced in area. And my client's preference is to put stone in there to give it a kind of a cleaner look along the fence line and then under the arborvitary trees to either keep it mulched or grassed. And so if there's, if there's anything else that Mike wants to add, otherwise he's here for technical questions and any discussions about the design, he can certainly answer. Is there anything specific, Mike, that you wanted to add?
Not at the moment, but if there's any commission members have any questions on.
Sure. I guess before I go to commission members, Casey, in your, in your comments, you'd indicated that at the present time, the, the site is not in compliance with regards to parking. And, well, with regards to parking, it's, it's not in compliance. Would you please comment on that?
Sure. This is something that has come up sort of through the various iterations of this project and some projects on the sort of primary site on North Colony Street. And this is, these are separate pieces of property. But one of the conditions of the variance is that it be associated with an approved dealers and repairs license, meaning that somebody couldn't randomly just buy those pieces and store, you know, 80, 80 vehicles there. So the site that, this is the site that it's affiliated with. I did go by, and, and so there has been some back and forth about, over the years, about, as we run into with car dealerships sometimes, overcrowding on the lot and vehicles being parked where they aren't supposed to be parked and that sort of thing. I did go by at the end of the day today and it was significantly improved. I did talk about that with the property owner last week. So that's, it, it was significantly improved. It wasn't brought up, it wasn't quite up to full compliance.
So maybe improved, but it's still not in compliance. Is that correct?
Right. And my understanding is that the intention of approving this is that it will help to alleviate some of the condition on the other piece, but we do still have some non-compliance on the other piece.
And correct me if wrong, if, if I'm wrong. You had a conversation with Mr. Gargano last week or the week before, and you discussed the non-compliance issue with him. And then he did indicate to you that this would help to alleviate the problem. But correct me if I'm wrong, at that particular point in time, he was not in a position to say that in fact, the site would then become in compliance. Is, is that correct or not?
The, that's my understanding. My understanding or my sort of takeaway from the conversation and maybe his representatives can address this further, but is that the most recently approved site plan, which I think was from 2006, seemed, his position, and I don't want to speak for somebody, but seemed to be, was that it seemed to be too restrictive to be able to come into full compliance with that. So we did talk about some alternatives for that site, the potential of modifying some of what's been approved on that site in order to create some flexibility there and that that would be alleviated by, hopefully, by these properties and the allowance of extra storage on these properties. But right, that the current site plan was, was overly restrictive.
I guess if you'd like to comment on that, please.
Yes. And, and again, you know, it would obviously be helpful if my client were here. And, and, you know, if, if the commission thinks it's necessary, we can continue this the next meeting. But Casey did share with us, she did bring in the 2006 site plan, which I wasn't involved at that point in time. And I don't think my client, my client had counsel at that time. And it was actually the first time I saw it. And, and my client was wide-eyed when he saw it because of course, as time passes, our memories fade. And, you know, you're doing business every day and you're, and you're busy and you're successful and, and things are going well. And you kind of drift away from, from the original intent sometimes of the best laid plans. You know, my, my client was very apologetic, you know, did assure her that when he went back to his site, that he would, you know, immediately tell his employees to, you know, start correcting and remedying the situation. And, and assured her that this, you know, what part of the big intent of this particular application is to give him some space to free that up, which, which of course I mentioned earlier. And, and he and I talked a little bit about potentially coming back with a modification of that 2006 site plan at some point and potentially closing off one of those entrances onto North Street because he, you know, that will give him, that will give him a little more space for actually storing vehicles and probably address some concerns that, that have been raised in terms of the curb cuts there. So he is working to try to alleviate that. And he is, he is very much aware of the problem now. And he, and he really believes, and I, and I have no reason to doubt it, that, you know, adding these 84 spaces is gonna make a big difference for him in terms of his, you know, his ability to deal with the inventory that he has on site and the service vehicles that are coming in. He also did, about a year or two ago, as, as some commission members may have noticed, he also did lease a location up the street for, for some of the overflow because there was a discussion back then, as Casey had mentioned, this has been a long process. You know, there was some discussion back then about making sure that he, you know, tried to keep the numbers of vehicles on site down.
Good. Thank you. I guess again, from my perspective, just listening to some of the comments that our town planner made in perhaps some of the representations that at least Mr. Gargano made as far as his ability to comply or not comply, I would feel much more comfortable continuing this until next month. So your client, Mr. Gargano, could be here. And hear some of the, the comments from commission members. And also perhaps be in a position to, you know, look to address some of the issues or to bring the site in compliance. I think our, you know, our town planner said at the moment, the site is not in compliance, even though there has been improvements made. From my perspective, I find it difficult to approve an application when in fact, a, a site is not in, in compliance. So that's my, would be my approach. But I'd ask other commission members for, you know, for their comments on that. Mrs. Morganstein?
Yeah, I completely agree. Why are we approving or looking to approve anything new when we're not currently meeting up to the agreement?
I'd be in favor of.
I'd be in favor of continuing this so we can speak with the applicant directly as well.
Likewise.
I would suggest again, if there are some considerations being made for the, for the site, for the, the current site, that may help to alleviate that, the problems at the site and bring that into compliance, it, it may be appropriate also to look to perhaps that, have that brought to this commission also. Because I'm very hesitant of having, approving something and then still having an issue on a site and then having to, you know, chase people to get in compliance. So if there are some areas that could be addressed on the, you know, on the existing site, I would encourage at least your applicant to start looking at that and perhaps look to bring those before the commission.
Understood.
Good.
Thank you.
Good. At this point, I guess we need a motion to continue this to our October meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we continue application 232-17 to our October meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Cohen, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions? We'll see you next month.
Thank you. Good evening.
Okay, it brings us to our next item is item number six. It's a site plan for a 762.65 square foot accessory apartment for a Poirier. If I pronounced the name wrong, I apologize. At 121 Simpson Avenue. Again, if the applicant and representative, please come forward to begin their presentation. And Mr. Fitzsimmons, if you would please note all correspondence for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have two items for correspondence. One was a memo from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, Wallingford Water and Sewer Department, dated August 28th, 2017. And we also have a copy of a memorandum from the Town of Wallingford Fire Marshal, addressed to the Town Planner, dated August 15th, 2017.
Thank you, Ms. Fitzsimmons. If the applicant and/or his representative, please introduce themselves and begin their presentation.
My name is Dan Lyon. I'm an architect representing the applicant. I'm an architect with office at 4 Simpson Avenue. And with me tonight is Ann Poirier, who is the owner of the 121 Simpson Avenue. And next to her is Mr. Francis Kett, who will be living in the accessory apartment. The, the property is big enough to take the addition, which as you can see on your schedule, is about 773 square feet, which is within the allowed square footage for an accessory apartment. All of the items that are true of this R11 piece of property have been met. We are staying within the setbacks, side, rear, whatever, and the percentage of coverage. One of the things that may not be clear is that there will be parking for two cars. There'll be two in the garage that's there now for the people that live at 121 that Poiriers. And then there'd be space for two in front of the garage for the, the new people. Let me see. I think there was a letter regarding, from Water and Sewer. And whatever is required there, maybe the enlargement of a water line. We don't know yet for sure just what it will be, but we certainly will provide the required water line. Let's try to think what else. Casey had raised the question. We have, by the way, we've got a common room or office, a common space, which is gonna be on the second floor. It will be accessible, calling it an office. It'll be accessible to the people in the accessory apartment. And it'll be accessible to the people at 121 Simpson Avenue. And, and the layout that I provided, and I did talk with Casey Friday, it looked as if you had to go through the, the bathroom to get to the office that is from the 121 residence. And I said that we will change that. And I've gone over that with the applicant just prior to this meeting. But we will change it. I don't know. With me tonight, as I said, is, is the owner of the property and the future tenant. At any rate, we are here to answer questions that you might have.
Good. Thank you. Casey, if you just please comment on that common area.
Sure. So there is a second story over a. Sure. So there is a second story over a portion of the addition, and Mr. Lyons did bring me a copy of the second-story floor plan that I had requested. So I'm going to bring that up so you all can look at it.
Good. It's open.
Just September 2017. So this right here is the second, second... Thank you, sorry. Second-story plan. And essentially, this area goes over the main house, and this area is the only portion that goes over the accessory apartment addition. The accessory apartment comes back like this. So I'll go sit back down.
Casey, would this help?
No, we have that. That was provided to us, but thank you.
So I wanted to make sure that's not being counted towards the square footage of the accessory apartment, so I wanted to make sure that it was something we were, and you would be comfortable considering shared space. When I looked at the plan a little further, as Mr. Lyons said, it was accessible from, via spiral staircase from the apartment up to that office. The other access that's shown on that plan, as Mr. Lyons said, is through the bathroom. So I was a little uncertain about that. So that's what the recommended condition of approval would be, is that they provide a second access to the primary unit, which, or a different access to the primary unit, which they are willing to agree to. So that was the conversation that we had. Again, I think the commission should make a determination about whether or not you're comfortable considering that shared space.
Good. Okay, thank you. Commission members with any comments on this? I guess from my perspective, looking at, you know, the plans and how it's set up, I don't have an issue with, you know, having that office designated as shared space. I don't know about other commission members. So I think we're, I don't believe that that's an issue for any commission members. That being said, are there any comments that commission members would like to make on the application? Seeing none, if there's any members from the public that like to comment, please come forward, name an address and your comments. Seeing none, just bring it back to you, Mr. Lyons, if you have any further comments that you'd like to make?
No.
If not, at this point in time, unless you have any final comments, Casey, I think you're all set. I'd entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve a site plan for Poirier for a 772.67 square foot accessory apartment at 121 Simpson Ave., as shown on plans entitled "Zoning, Location Survey, Map Depiction, Existing House and Proposed Accessory Apartment and Land." Anne Poirier, 121 Simpson Ave., Wallingford, Connecticut, dated August 7, 2017, and architectural drawings titled "Accessory Apartment for Roy and Carol Franceschet?"
Franceschet, correct.
Is that close?
Close enough.
121 Simpson Ave., Wallingford, Connecticut, Poirier Residence, dated August 2017, updated to September 2017, subject to satisfying the Water and Sewer Division memo dated August 28, 2017, final building official inspection approval. And was there anything else?
The door.
And providing different access?
To the primary unit.
To the primary unit satisfactory to town planner.
We have a motion on the application. We have a second. Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mrs. Morganstein, please.
Yes.
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 And yes, application's been approved. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
You're welcome. It brings us to our next item, which is a site plan for a 775 square foot accessory apartment for JNN Whitehouse at 245 North Airline Road. And again, Mr. Fitzsimmons, if you'd please note all correspondence for the record, and if the applicant, please come forward to begin preparing for the presentation.
A letter was received from Jonathan and Nicole Whitehouse on August 11, 2017, addressed to the Planning and Zoning Commission. A copy of a letter was received from the Town of Wallingford Chief Sanitarium, dated, received August 15, 2017. A memorandum was received from the Wallingford Water and Sewer Senior Engineer, dated 8/28/17. An additional memo was received from the Senior Engineer, Water and Sewer, same date. And also comments received from the Office of the Wallingford Fire Marshal, dated 8/15/17. No other comments.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. If the applicant, please introduce themselves and begin their presentation.
Hi, I'm John Whitehouse.
Mr. Whitehouse, if you could pull that a little bit closer to you, so they can pick your voice up.
Hi there. I'm John Whitehouse. I live at 245 North Airline Road in Wallingford.
David Bohner. I live in 25 Seneca Road, New Haven.
Good. And if you'd just begin your presentation, please.
We're here to get approval for a 775-foot square foot accessory apartment attached to my existing home.
Okay. Casey, any comments?
The only question I had here, we had some discussion about the exact location of the accessory apartment, and I think we've come to a good conclusion. But if you look on the floor plan, there is a portion of the apartment that shares a wall with the living room for the main house. And there is a portion of the apartment that shares a wall. So basically, you have the garage, you have some shared laundry space, and then on the other side, another shared wall with the apartment. So we had run into a situation years ago where we had a very, very small portion of a wall that shared a, that was shared with the primary unit. So the requirement is that it has to share a wall with the primary unit if it's going to be otherwise attached. So we had run into a situation years ago where there was, I think, three feet of the wall was shared or something like that, and there was a big issue around that, and we ran into some problems with that. So I asked the applicant to provide me with the numbers for this. 12 feet of the wall will be shared with the primary unit, and then 19 will, about the shared laundry space. I'm comfortable with that, but I wanted to make sure that the commission was comfortable with that.
Sure. Thank you, Casey. Any commission members, any comments? I certainly support our town planner's assessment of the situation. Before I entertain a motion on the application or go out to the public, there was a request by the applicant to, there was a variance, apparently it was applied for, and you've requested that, as you didn't receive the variance, that you essentially looking to have that fee associated with that, you stored this application. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Casey, as far as with the variance, did that go before the ZBA, and was there, you know, action and work done by staff on that variance?
I believe that the variance was withdrawn because the applicant did come up with a different plan to bring it into compliance. So in this particular case, that was done shortly after the application was submitted, and we would rather have someone come forward with a plan that's in compliance than go for a variance. This is more appropriate. So I don't have any objection to that.
Okay. Commission members with any comments on that?
I'd be in favor of applying the funds we have for the variance that was withdrawn towards this application.
You too.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I'm fine with it too, but I'm still a little unsure of why we would not give this back if it was, you know, withdrawn and there was no work done.
Typically, once someone applies, that you don't get the fee back. Usually, that's, I mean, there has been work done associated with this application, and there was with the variance application for this, but because they were willing to bring it into compliance, I think that work can be sort of applied towards what the fee was for this application. The other reason is, a lot of times, by the time people withdraw, we've already run the legal notice, and that's the biggest expense that we incur.
Okay, that, yeah, makes sense. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Any members from the public like to comment on the application? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. Any final comments? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion on the application.
Do you want to do the waiver first, or we don't have to? Do we have to make a motion or anything on the waiver?
Well, can we include that in the motion itself?
Yeah, you can just tack that on to the motion.
Wait, we're just crediting what he paid, because I don't know the difference in fees, or whatever he paid.
It's just a credit towards this fee. Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve a site plan for Whitehouse for a 775 square foot accessory apartment at 245 North Airline Road, as shown on plans entitled "Improvement Location Survey," land of Jonathan R. and Nicole S. Whitehouse for, or 245 North Airline Road, Wallingford, Connecticut, dated April 25, 2016, revised to May 2, 2016, and further revised by the applicant to show the proposed accessory apartment garage addition and closed-end porch and associated submitted floor plan, subject to final building official inspection and approval, and waiver of fees that are credited to the planning and zoning fees. Right?
I know what you mean.
We're essentially just crediting whatever the applicant had paid for the variance. We're taking those fees crediting toward the fee for this particular application.
For this. Right, right.
Okay, we have a motion on the application. We have a second.
A second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mrs. Morganstein.
Yes.
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 And yes, application's been approved. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
You too.
All right, brings us on to our next item, which is Agenda Item Number Eight. It's a site plan, retail restaurant at 256, and, it's a retail restaurant and 256 square feet addition to a building for D. Plummer at 654 North Colony Road. Again, if the applicant come forward, begin preparing for his presentation. Mr. Fitzsimmons, please note all correspondence for the record.
Sure. The commission received an inter-office referral from the Chief Engineer from the Town of Wallingford Electrical Department, dated August 16, 2017. A letter was sent from the Planning and Zoning Office to Don Plummer regarding 654 North Colony Road on August 31, 2017. A memo was received from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, Wallingford Water and Sewer, dated August 29, 2017, and a copy of a memo was received from the Office of Fire Marshal, dated August 15, 2017, as well as a copy of a memo was sent to the Planning and Zoning Office from the Department of Health, dated August 17, 2017. That's all.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. If the applicant would please introduce themselves and begin his presentation.
Donald Plummer, 2168 Chamberlain Highway, Burling, Connecticut. I am here to get approval for a plan to build a 16-by-16 kitchen off the back of, I believe it was an old Avis Car rental building back in the day. I'm not sure what it was, but it's a simple 16-by-16 building on the back. It's on a slab, very simple operation. I've already been approved for the variances to build the kitchen, and that's pretty much simple.
If you could just please give us just a very brief description as far as what you're planning to do.
Yes, it'll be actually a steam kitchen like the, like the steam blue crabs in, in Maryland. It'll probably, it'll consist of, you know, a three-bass sink that you need for washing, a hand sink. It'll be four or five steam pots, you know, off of natural gas or propane, whichever one suits me better. I mean, I haven't talked to Yankee Gas yet, but they're willing to come out and see what they can do. And that's it. I mean, it's very simple. It's no grease. There's no stove. There's no fire at all, other than steam pots. And I've already talked to all those departments that you guys brought up, the fire department. They told me everything I need to do to comply with those guys, and we'll go from there.
And as far as seating, is it going to be all?
No, it's whether I'm allowed a retail, you're allowed, I believe, 12 seats, but they will be outside of the building on the deck. There is no eating inside the buildings at all.
Okay, thank you. Casey, any comments on the application?
Just briefly, Mr. Plummer and I did go over my comments, so I think where those are pretty much addressed, he was agreeable to those. The only other thing that I would, just for your information, the variance granted was technically, this is an addition to a building on the property, and normally that would require the entire site to be brought into compliance. This isn't the primary building on the property, and there are several nonconformities on the site, so a variance was granted to allow the 16-by-16 addition without him having to bring the whole rest of the site up to standard.
And that was, the variance was granted for that?
Yes.
There's at least one thing I can agree with, with the ZBA. Any commission members with any comments? Seeing none, unless you have no further comments, Mr. Plummer, I'll entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve a site plan for the plumber to construct an addition onto the smaller building at 645 North Colony Road, and to change the use of that building to retail restaurant, as shown on submitted plans, subject to satisfying comments from the Chief Engineer, dated July 7, 2017, satisfying comments from the town planner, dated August 31, 2017, satisfying comments from the Senior Engineer of Wallingford Water and Sewer, dated August 29, 2017, satisfying the comments from the Fire Marshal, dated August 15, 2017, and satisfying the Health Department, dated August 15, 2017.
Thank you, Mr. Plummer. We have a motion on the application. We have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mrs. Morganstein.
Yes.
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 And yes, application's been approved, and good luck with your new business.
Thank you.
Okay, Casey, if we could move on now to the bond releases and reductions?
Number nine, the Kohler Environmental Center at Toot is ready for release. The other three are not.
Okay, do I have a motion to release the Toot Rosemary Hall Foundation bond?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we release the bond for Toot Rosemary Hall Foundation, East Main Street, Kohler Environmental Center, application 414-10.
Do we have a motion to release the bond? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? And as usual, Casey, we're going to skip number 13, and we'll just keep moving on. If you'd go over reports in officers and staff, if you would, please.
Yes. So you have four administrative approvals on there. I think they were all pretty straightforward, so unless anyone has any questions, I'll move on. Okay. ZBA decisions from the August 21 meeting. There were two child daycare centers approved. There was a sign setback approved, and a variance for a garage addition. For the upcoming ZBA meeting, September 18, a month from tonight, you see the, actually, the item number one is the one that was withdrawn.
Actually, Casey, I don't, we don't see it, because we have, just for the agenda for Monday, August 21.
Oh, you're right. Okay, I will get you a copy of the one for the following month. There is one of note on that agenda, which is a over 3,000-square-foot covered structure for growing figs that came to our department as a complaint, and so they are applying for a variance to allow for that size of accessory structure. a variance to allow for that size of accessory structure. The property is about an acre in size.
Mr. Fitzsimmons, do you have a comment?
Growing what?
Fig.
Figs.
Figs, that's what I thought you said.
So it's a rather large structure.
In a residential?
It's an active zoning violation.
Yes.
A big one.
Guess would the commission like to make any kind of a comment to the ZBA on this?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, 3,000 feet is bigger than my house.
Casey, if you would, we'll see where we get with that.
It's under figs on the log?
We don't dislike figs, but.
Especially when they're doodles.
So typically, I comment that if, or if you have concerns, like, you know, in this case, I would comment that there's a concern about the size and that there is concern about what the hardship would be.
Exact, yeah. I would stress the concern with respect to the hardship.
Can I just ask a question to you, Mr. Chairman? They're not calling it a greenhouse?
No. It, from what I understand through our zoning enforcement officer, there is a sort of watering system, and there is some sort of either footings or foundation or something of that nature, but it's not enclosed on the sides, I don't believe. But to that end, with a greenhouse, typically, we have the 300 square, the same 300 square foot restriction for residential.
All right. And Casey, if you please continue.
Sure. Onto the zoning enforcement log, I will note that I did go by the property on North Turnpike as requested last month. It doesn't look like anybody's even been on there for a while, so that's a good, a good thing.
Good.
And then I will leave it to you, whether or not you have any questions, comments, or other violations you'd like me to be aware of.
Anyone have any comments? No, I think that does it.
Okay. And then just finally, before we end the meeting, we have been discussing a potential workshop to discuss town center zoning. I think originally, we were aiming for the end of September, but we couldn't quite get a date that worked for everybody. So now, I believe the, the newest round of, I sent out another round of dates. I think October 2 was the one that seemed to work. Is everyone who's here available that day?
What day of the week?
It's a Monday.
Mondays are good.
Yeah, I would be available.
Yes.
What's the date?
10/2. Monday.
October 2, my brother's birthday. Yeah, right now, that's fine.
I think that's good for everybody, Casey.
Okay. And you have one of those doodle polls out, too, so if it's easier to check and respond that way, that's, I just wanted to try to nail it down.
Okay. And just one other thing. At last month's meeting, we had talked about the healthcare structure, and Casey, you might, if there were some commission members that were not here at that meeting, and we initially had planned to have a public hearing on that for this month, however, we were not able to do that, so we're planning on having that in October. But if you could give the commission, just the commission members, again, just a brief overview of that, please.
Sure. That was, you received some information in your packets about that last month. That's based on a change in state legislation for what they, they titled temporary healthcare structures. They're sort of affectionately referred to as granny pods in the planning world. But essentially, it allows for a detached accessory, essentially permanent building that would act like a, sort of like an in-law apartment, but it would be a separate detached accessory building. It has to have full utilities. It has, and the, the legislation requires, it's essentially allowed for someone that needs a caretaker. So the legislation requires whoever is going to have one of these to provide documentation that they need a caretaker and sort of continuing documentation that they continue to need a caretaker. And there have been some, there were some concerns that I raised at the last meeting. There have been some concerns that have been discussed, sort of amongst other planners. I went to a conference, but this was one of the items they touched on. And essentially, the concern, some of the concerns raised include, I do have some concern about basing a land use on someone's healthcare situation and what kind, how that affects HIPAA provisions and requiring them to sort of provide that type of information. The other concern is, once someone doesn't need it anymore, we're left with a permanent structure with utilities and things of that nature. And I'm not, at that point, we would have to require someone to remove the structure, and that just seems to open up a lot of problems. You do have your accessory apartment provision already, which I think serves the purpose of what we're talking about, and I think serves it in a way that I think, at least, I'm more comfortable with. You know, like I said, it still serves that same purpose. Someone gets a separate dwelling area, but there are some additional safeguards in place, and we also have addressed the issue of allowing it to be rented out. We, we don't restrict it to a family member, or there are no restrictions as to who it can be rented to, as long as the main unit is owner occupied. But the way your accessory apartment provisions are written, it also maintains it as a accessory, as a, a real accessory use, which is another one of the concerns with the separate structures. So the legislation allows for the town to essentially opt out of the provision, but that has to be via formal action by this commission and by the legislative body of the town. So what we had talked about was holding a public hearing to discuss the potential of opting out.
Questions? Mrs. Morgenstein?
Yeah, I just have one thought. So obviously, we're trying to get our elderly people to age in place, and this is what the provision is about.
Absolutely.
So could we better serve people and accomplish the same thing if there were some sort of a permission granted for a mobile home? I mean, some people bring, you know, Grammy comes and visits for the summer, and they park the mobile home in the driveway, and they hook it up to all of the same things. And if you were a similar situation, that she needs six months until her hospice care is over, it then rolls away, as opposed to being something that has been built on the property. So rather than just, and again, it'll be a workshop, so we'll talk about it, but rather than just saying, no, we as a town don't want this because there is a benefit to it, we would perhaps consider a certain size of something that rolled in and could then be rolled out, a mobile home.
That's certainly something you could consider. I, I think there are, you know, there are two sides to every, everything. I get a lot of complaints about people whose neighbors have mobile homes in their driveway for a really long time.
Yeah.
So that's sort of the other side of it.
Oh, yeah, no, it would only be, yeah, I, I wondered myself. I see it, and it's summer, and people come and visit. I did not think it was allowed, but in that instance...
Yeah, and I mean, like I said, you do have your accessory apartment provision. Maybe you could look to tweak that or do some, I mean, you can opt out, and that doesn't mean that you are taking a position that you don't want to be friendly to aging in place or caretaking. There, there are other options that might be more appropriate for Wallingford and for the decisions that we've made about land use so far.
Anyone else?
Mr. Simmons?
I, I do think that our current regs are favorable to accessory apartments, accessory uses. I apologize, I wasn't at the meeting last month, but I would be interested in scheduling the workshop. I don't know if it'd be appropriate to do it prior to or in conjunction with downtown parking, like before, just.
Well, I, I guess we were not really thinking as far as scheduling a workshop on this. We, we were, we were thinking about, yeah, yeah, we were, yeah, we were thinking of scheduling the public hearing on it.
Got you, perfect.
Because I think there is a, there's a timeline here. If you don't take action by October 1st or something.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
I think I, I think I said workshop, yeah, public hearing.
Yeah, so we can schedule it as a public hearing. That way, you could have discussion. It'll be advertised. Members of the public can have discussion, and then you can decide whether you're ready to make a decision or not.
And if you could also just notify, because the town council, if, if we take action and decide to opt out, the town council then still needs to take action, correct?
Yes.
So if you would just send a notification out to the, to the town council that in fact we're having this public hearing, so they're aware of it, and whether they'd like to participate at that time or not, but at least everybody will be fully aware of it.
Okay.
Okay. If there's no further, Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, just one thing to Casey. Casey, I got your email on the regional planning for Thursday.
Yeah.
I should be able to attend that.
Okay, oh, good.
Just a quick question. Is there any, and I looked through the agenda, is there, is there any prep work I need to do for that?
I actually haven't been to a meeting yet either, but in that agenda packet, essentially, what you're mostly discussing is proposed changes in other towns that might, in the same way, we have to notify. So if you've looked at those, I think that's.
Okay.
Plenty.
All right, yeah, I'll RSVP.
Thank you. Awesome.
And thank you, Mr. Cohen, for attending the meeting, planning on attending the meeting. If there's, you know, no other business before us, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, second by Mr. Fitzsimmons. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, we're adjourned. Have a good evening.